I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Crystal, can you tell us if we have a form?
Mayor Protem Young, Mayor Moss is absent, Councilmember Contreras present, Councilmember Gillian absent, Councilmember Romanov is present, Mayor Protem Young present, and Councilmember Crummel present.
All right, thank you. If you could all stand and join me in a moment of silence. And now if you would join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have two public comments tonight. Our first is Mr. Walter Mayo. Mayo?
Mayu.
Mayu? If you could come up to podium and state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to present your question.
We have lived in Willow Park for 40 years at the same location. In the beginning, there were no deer around. Now, we're flooded with deer up on the area where we live. The other night, I took a quick trip around eight streets, counted over 70 deer. A lot of them still had their spots. They were small. It's impossible to have any foliage or decorative plants unless it's in the backyard behind the fence, and even then, you've got problems. But in the front, it's impossible. They eat it all. Gone. My request is that the city create an ordinance, making it illegal to supplementally feed the deer. The reason they're up here in the area where I live is because folks throw out bags, heaps of corn on their driveway, feeding the deer because they think it's necessary, I guess. It's not. Those are wild animals, and they're not wild anymore. They can be eating alongside the street, and you can drive by them, they won't even raise their head up. So I'm requesting an ordinance in Willow Park that it's illegal to supplementally feed Also, I got one more thing. Royal View, the street going up to Knightsbridge, has, I never counted them, but a bunch of potholes. There are two of them that if you hit them, you have to slow down, because if you hit them, you may damage the undercarriage of your car. I don't know what we're doing, but it looks like road repair has become a forgotten issue. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Frances Horch.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for your service to our city. Chief Franklin and Chief Snyder, thank you for all you do to protect and serve our community. My name is Frances, and I live at 901 San Basque Court. I want to thank Mayor Protem for your intervention after the last council meeting in attempting to resolve the damage my property easement sustained during the road construction, damage that I have been reporting to the council since May 28. Thank you for sending out Michelle Gilker, our Public Works Director, to address the repairs. From the beginning, she made it clear that she was not familiar with the damage that I had reported, and that she was meeting with me for clarification of the damage and to provide a resolution. Without a doubt, I believe the City of Willow Park is most fortunate in having Michelle Gilker as our Public Works Director. I found Michelle's high standards of integrity, transparency, and commitment to do the right thing is what sets her apart. I appreciated Michelle's knowledge and understanding in reviewing and inspecting the damage to my property easement. I am reporting that I am very grateful that Public Works will be able to remove the rock and eliminate the erosion on the west side of the driveway, address and repair the crack and the unevenness of XIT's repairs to my damaged driveway, culvert, eliminate the erosion of the easement on the east side of the driveway sidewalk, including the regrading and elimination of the erosion across the covert that the city installed. Unfortunately, there is still no resolution to the repair of the damaged concrete aggregate edge on the driveway approach, nor the repair of the widened crack on the concrete aggregate driveway. It was made clear by Michelle that the repairs to the concrete aggregate damage is out of her hands, which is why I respectfully ask the council's help in repairing the unresolved concrete aggregate driveway and approach damage. When I reported the damage of my concrete aggregate to the city, I was told by Gretchen Vosges that the driveway was already cracked, and at one point, I was told by Assistant Manager Fundenberg that had I had had my easement removed and replaced, I could have had what I wanted. It is not a matter of what I want. It is a matter of doing the right thing, repairing the damages that my concrete aggregate driveway sustained during the construction and during the removal and replacement of the road that we did not cause. Others in our subdivision neighborhood were granted, per city approval, to put things back as they were, and in some cases, they approved providing more. That's wonderful. I don't have any complaints with that. That's what we're supposed to do, put it back or make it better. I respectfully request damage my property easement sustained during the road construction be repaired and put back the way it was, no more and no less. On a different matter, I wanted to commend Mayor Protem Young on her passionate dedication to improving the parks in Willow Park. The most recent endeavor that you championed is no exception and rather remarkable. It came as a surprise to read about your feat and the groundbreaking in the community news because I was unaware that the city had already approved the budget for the park. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda for approval of the council meeting minutes from the meeting August 13, 2024. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes dated August 13, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. The next item is discussion action to discuss, consider, and act on approving a proposed ad valorem tax rate for the period beginning October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025.
Yes. On your place at the dais, I've updated the staff memo. When I looked at it, there's, it was a working draft that I used, and so there's two total tax rates in there. That's in your packet that you received over the weekend, on Friday, and you have an updated staff memo here. It has not changed. The tax rate has not changed. A maintenance and operations tax rate of .203371 and an interest and sinking tax rate of .229175 for a total tax rate of .432546. That's the numbers that we have been working off of for the last six weeks, and so I do have your, excuse me, no new revenue rate of .382771, and our total tax rate would be below the voter-approved rate of .461084. And so as statute, you're going to vote on the proposed rate, and it needs to be a roll call vote, and so we'll have to go down the list and take those yays and nays. Councilman Crummel, any questions?
Anything to note with our, our tax rates this year from, on the proposed values and how that?
So our values were relatively flat. We saw less than 1% increase in the total taxable value, and so we had to increase the rate to keep up with inflation. We've got some substantial pay increases for police officers in this budget as well. But I still think overall, we're still one of the lowest taxing rates in Parker County and this, in the area.
So Pat, do you want a motion and a second?
Correct.
And then a roll call vote? All right. Do we have a motion for?
I'll make a motion that the City of Willow Park assesses a proposed maintenance and operations tax rate of .203371 and a proposed interest and sinking rate of .229175 for a total proposed tax rate of .432546.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Pick one.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, any further discussion? All right, whenever you're ready, Crystal, you can do the roll call vote.
Justice Contreras?
Aye.
Councilman Romanov?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Crummel?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, item number three, discussion action to discuss, consider, and act on setting the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the tax rate and proposed budget for the period beginning October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025.
Yes, you'll notice you have an updated public notice as I had to verify some of the numbers. Your proposed tax rate is .3432546, which you just voted on. The no new revenue rate's .375858, and the voter-approved rate is .461084. This is a 0.349 cent increase, and it will bring in roughly 199,000 more in property taxes.
And so what we're doing is setting the public hearing for this?
Yes.
Which the suggested date?
Yes.
Is September 10, 2024.
Yes, yes. September 10, 6:00 PM, and we will adopt the tax rate and the budget on that day.
Any other questions for Brian? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the City of Willow Park hold a public hearing on the budget and a public hearing on the tax rate for fiscal year 2024 through 2025, period beginning on October 1, 2024, and ending on September 30, 2025. On September 10, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Willow Park City Hall located at 120 El Chico Trail, and authorize staff to publish public notices as required by law.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We don't need a roll call for this, right?
No.
All right, all in favor? Thank you very much. Item number four, discussion action to adopt an ordinance adopting a comprehensive fee and rate schedule for the following enterprise fund utility rates, services, charges for fiscal year 2024-25, including water impact fees, water tap fees, wastewater impact fees, wastewater tap fees, drainage impact fees, utility deposit fees, water base rates, water volumetric charges, wastewater rates, solid waste rates, additional utility service charges, and water meter costs, amending various city ordinances, and containing a severability clause and effective date. Michelle.
Council, you all remember a year ago, we had new energy, the new gen solutions come in, and they presented y'all with a three-year plan regarding the rates for water and sewer. We are in year two of that plan. Under this proposed ordinance, we will be increasing, we will not be increasing the water base fee. We will be increasing the base charge by 10 cents. The sewer base fee will also be going up, as well as the volumetric charge. This is to, was, the purpose of that study and doing this was to get the wastewater fund where it could hold on its own within a three-year time period. This is continuing to move towards that, and this also allows us that as our costs are increasing, we're able to continue to operate the way we have been in the water
So these are the recommended rates that we had last year from that study?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we think that, is it every three years that we think we'll do a study? If that study covers three years of increases?
I would suggest we do another one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like we'll have next year that's already part of, and then after that day?
And then we can do another study.
Yes.
Normally, they do these on a five-year rotation.
Okay.
So we ask for a three-year to get that wastewater fund up quickly, so.
Okay. Y'all have any other questions for Michelle?
Yeah, based on the last financial update, we got it looked like the wastewater fund was, was doing stronger, and it looked like, and I mean, I think it may have been propped up at one point by some of our other funds, but could you give just a quick update of how this three-year plan is progressing and what that looks like? Are we on track? Is this?
I'm going to say we're on track based on what I've seen. We did have to transfer 200,000?
Yes.
Okay, from water into wastewater this year, which we had originally scheduled 400,000, and we didn't have to do it, thankfully, but we still need that bump in order to make sure that we're, because chemical costs this year alone have nearly killed us terrifically, so we need that bump going, so make sure we're good.
So at the end of year three, you think it should be, even though it should be self-sustaining at that point?
I'm hoping so. I believe so.
Okay. Without predicting future inflation costs and chemicals and anything like that, it's on track.
I'll answer that for you. I think at the end of year three, I'm very confident that, that we'll obviously have to reevaluate, but I don't see a rate increase after next year. We may not see one next year. As, and it all has to do with the timing on when the wastewater treatment plant is completed. If it's completed in this fiscal year, and I think Chase is about to give y'all an update on that, if it's completed in, I say the next fiscal year, not this one, but the next one, we have on, on the balance sheet, the debt for the package plant, that if we can sell that asset, then we would, we're going to take, I think that payment's around 300,000 annually, that we can remove from the balance sheet. And so I think by taking that off our balance sheet, we'll be okay. It's just a matter of, the completion date's October of '25, and so it's just depending on how we kind of balance some of these things out, but the wastewater fund will look a lot different 24 months from now than it does today.
Any other questions? Crystal, would you like to read the caption for the ordinance? Do you want us to make the motion first and then read into the caption?
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion for the?
Should be a motion.
The motion would be to adopt the ordinance and the captions. So go, I give a motion, and then I'll go ahead and read the caption for you.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance as presented. Do you want a second?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Willow Park, Texas, adopting a comprehensive fee and rate schedule for the following enterprise fund utility rates, service charges for fiscal year 2024-25, including water impact fees, water tap fees, water impact fees, wastewater tap fees, drainage impact fees, utility deposit fees, water base rates, water volumetric charges, wastewater rates, solid waste rates, additional utility services charges, and water meter costs, amending various city ordinances, and containing a severability clause and an effective date. And I got the motion by Young and a second by Romanov?
Correct. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much. Item number five, discussion only, an update on our wastewater treatment plans. Chase, come on.
Good evening, Council. We have a brief PowerPoint that I thank Rose for helping me put together, because I'm not very good at that stuff. Do you want to move forward to the first page, please, Crystal? Which I labeled the dates on the pictures, which, you know, starting in January, it was just dirt, then moves over to the 16th, we have the whole, next, please? And it just slightly shows the progression. The first photo, they started pouring. They had to dig a trench around the outside and put rock and pumps in because the depth of it is below the creek, which is right beside it, so the amount of water coming in, so they have pumps running 24/7, and then, yeah, then they have the foundation for the slab, and then they have it poured. Next, please? And they already have, they have the walls going up, and then the center photo as of yesterday. So they're about 80% done on the main plant itself, two weeks left, two pours for the walls, and then the base of the plant itself will be completed. They have already backfilled three, three sides of the plant to grade or close to grade, and they have the chlorine contact chamber on the back to build and pour, and then it's downhill from there, all the accessories, the building, and the things externally running the water and things like that. So we're on a good pace. Y'all have any questions for me regarding the plant?
So the final, how much, is the dirt get filled back up along the walls?
Yes, the three sides, the backside where it actually says August 26 to 24, that has not been backfilled completely because that's where the coloring contact chamber is going to be built, built, and they have to pour that up into that building. There's rebar sticking out right now. They have it to the grade to pour, they just have a few things, they have to lay a line that comes out of the pit for the equalization basin out to the lift station. But hey, I didn't get an actual timeframe on when they were planning on starting that, but once, once they pour the internally about two weeks, then they're moving on to that. So within the next three, three and a half weeks.
So the final, when they're all said and done, and it'll look like I've kind of tucked up against the building, then how much concrete's actually sticking in it?
I don't remember exactly what the plan show. It's anywhere from five to seven feet, give or take, on the side.
Okay.
But the final grade will probably be one of the last things they do.
Yeah, all right. Good.
Any other questions for Chase?
I know at one point, we discussed that protective coating that goes on. At what stage are they doing that as they?
That will be after everything's poured, and I think they tie everything together. I'm not sure exactly which step. It'll be close to the end.
Okay.
Just where they don't damage it in the building process.
Okay.
So we're now pumping effluent from the old plant up to the golf course, right?
Yes, yes.
So we still have to extend that line down along the creek to the new plant when that's finished, when the new plant is finished?
No, I believe that's in, we just have to divert it. I think that was put in when they put the effluent line in originally, so we'll kill out that section and then jump over to the new.
Okay.
They'll have, they will have to extend it out some because they didn't take it all the way because they wasn't, whereas the contractor that put that line in wasn't sure what the position of the plant was at the time when they were putting that in.
Okay.
So about 85% of that is already in place.
All right. Any issues on, on getting equipment pumped?
No, they said everything has been running smoothly. They have, they've had some deliveries already. I think 95% of all building materials for the building have already been dropped. They already have the pipe for the sewer and the water for the facility. It's just mainly the equipment for the plant itself. They didn't want shipped too soon, but he assured us that his supplier is holding it. He just didn't want it on site for six months before they had to do anything with it because it's, some of it's pretty expensive.
Now this, one of the things was about the odor control, I guess, lack of a better word, so that's all part of that system that's going to be?
Yes, which, and this is a completely different style plant, so it's not going to be constantly aerated, it's going to be constantly treating itself and working itself, so it won't be just constantly there. Levels are going to be continually fluctuating and treating, and then we're going to be moving it along. It's a completely different process than we use now, so the odor control should be a lot more manageable.
Okay.
Are we doing misters on top?
Doing what?
Misters?
Not to my knowledge. I don't think so.
We're not? But we could add later if we wanted to.
Yeah, I mean, that's always an add-on. It shouldn't be a major add-on to that.
Very good.
Anything else?
Looks good. Appreciate it.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Chase. All right, we have, prior to executive session, do we have any City Council comments?
Waiting for cool weather.
Nothing?
Not this one.
Sure?
All right, City Manager, comments?
So we will be adopting the budget on September the 10th, as we just put out there. We will be running an ad in the community news this week. October 1 is National Night Out. It'll be at the Kingsgate Park, and so we would like to invite the public and Council and everybody to come out and see your neighbors and meet your neighbors. It's always a fun event. We still have a couple of spots available for TML, for any council members that would like to attend Houston. I think the Astros are still in first place, if you're wondering, Bill.
Oh.
And, and so we got a lot of exciting things coming on in the next couple of weeks, and so just look forward to it. Franklin, right? Yes. Yeah, so the code of ordinance has been updated on the website per Franklin Legal, and so we adopted that the last council meeting, and they've already jumped on it.
Awesome.
Pardon me. I want to look up an ordinance today, and it's genius. It's, here's public comment. That's genius. That's, she deserves it already. That is genius work.
Thank you. All right, Council will convene into executive session at 6:28. It is anticipated that all or a portion of the discussion of the four voting items will be lifted in closed executive session under authority of Section 551 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. However, no action will be taken on these items until the council reconvenes an open All right, I'm going to call a meeting to order at 7:14. We're coming out of executive session. No action on item six or seven. Do we have a motion for item eight?
Do you want to read? I can do it that way, or I can do it.
You want a motion?
No, I can do it. So I'll make a motion to approve a contract to sell real property for the purchase.
Buy real property.
Well, it's a contract to sell real.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For the purchase.
Sorry, sorry.
For the purchase of two parcels of land, one being a .1185 acre tract of land, and another being approximately one acre tract of land for the Kingsgate Bridge project.
Right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion passes. Any further comments?
No.
Great, I'll entertain a motion.